I guess that we'd be willing to do it, but I found one of them on two fifty per show. And that's my story.
Yes, sir.
I was under the impression that we would be at this broadcast now this year. I was not only, I was standing at once. It was awarded back in twenty sixteen seventeen for the four-year tenure of this council. And remember, we got other broadcast units that love to have this duty and would love to have this job. So I think to be fair, even though this council did not take the lowest bid, I think we need to extend it to other broadcast companies to let them know that they're able to submit their bids to broadcast our council.
Okay. All right.
Keep the man quality. Councilwoman Benjamin.
Hey, Paul. How are you?
I'm good. How are you? They're enjoying for the citizens on the radio station. High quality, everything we needed as far as specifications. You all made it and I thank you with the young. Thank you for that. Now, if anyone to want, is there more money, less, or the same?
It'd be the exact same.
The exact same amount, okay. Just wanted to make sure that...
And we would continue to on RE and maintain the high bandwidth dedicated connection between City Hall and our radio station that we have a contract with Pine Bet Wireless to deliver. And the only use for that connection is, of course, for the city council meetings. So we would still pay for that on RE and ourselves and maintain that connection. In addition, we would, we would, you know, I've always enjoyed having each and every one of you out at the radio station. Of course, our open door policy will still remain.
Yes, you all come your job there.
If you guys need access to the airwaves, we're more than happy, you know, because we think it's important to have you, you know, address listeners and the concerns of the citizens too, you know, this patient. I think it's been really well with the listeners back coming back from the Aussie. You know, in addition, I'd like to point out that we'll also cross promote the city council meetings on all four of our FM's. And, you know, we've had, this would be our fifth year to carry the council meetings. And I think we've had a very, very good, reliable service to the city council and we'd like to continue that. And, you know, if there's anything else that you think would be important that maybe we could do in addition, you know, we're definitely open to offering something else if we need to, if you think we need to be doing a better job with something else, we'd be happy to look at that.
That's very gracious of you. Thank you. Also, are we paying for any other radio broadcasts currently?
The seven city council?
No, just city government period.
Yes, ma'am.
What are we paying for now?
Okay, well, there's a weekly show that Mayor Melton does. It is actually a program that comes immediately following the Tom Joyner Morning Show on WJAM called Mornings with Mayor Melton. And that is a public affairs program that he and one of our representatives at the station, I was actually not the station rep, I guess, if you will, that actually cut that deal. However, that deal's been in place now going on almost two years.
And we're paying for that currently, right?
Yes, ma'am, the city of Selma is, yes, ma'am.
Okay. Yeah, yeah. Thank you.
Councilman Short.
I want to make it clear, Paul, I'm not questioning your quality of services for what you guys has given. They're still saying that they're other broadcast company in our community. They should be afforded opportunity with anything I can to do.
Sure.
And of course, it would be the will of this council as to who can receive the job. But yet, it's still, I think we need to be fair. We need to open it up because there've been other broadcast companies that have broadcast our council meetings.
That's right, yes, sir.
Even though this council did not go with the lowest bid, at least they afforded an opportunity for other broadcast companies to do business with the city.
Sure.
So I'm, I'm, I'm going to push for that. You would probably get the bids, but I want the other broadcast company to know that the doors open to them as well.
Of course, yes, sir.
Okay, what we would do, we'll regress back to last, last year and open the bid when you need it, rather. As a hope, you know, everyone must have broadcast said, they coming for us to attend the meeting today. About Councilwoman Benjamin, Councilman O'Leary, Councilman...
Councilman Short is correct. You should have made it out. Did we, did you win the bidding for the mayor's office? Was it bid done?
No, ma'am, in that particular case, it was not.
Okay.
Not, well, not that I'm aware of. There was no request, I guess, for...
You would have probably, now, you would have probably...
Yes, ma'am. Yes, ma'am. In that particular case, the way that, from my vantage point, it was just a block airtime purchase.
Yeah, but it needs to be bided out because it would be bid down. Because we're paying for that, right? The city plan came for the mayor's, uh, things, right?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. And I like your offer, Paul, by the way.
Councilwoman... Dave's asking, what is the price of the mayor's show on your station?
Yes, sir. Now, please, if this, I feel like this is an accurate number and I can get back to you if this is...
I'll take your best call.
Okay. Okay, best call.
Yes, please.
I'm fairly certain that it's a hundred and fifty dollars a show.
A hundred and fifty dollars a show every Friday?
Yes, sir.
And then, just to follow up that question, the council's retrospective, if you will, that occurs the next morning on Wednesday, is that, does that add to the cost of our total price to hear or broadcast? I don't think it does, but like, can we answer for everybody else as well?
Sure, sure. You know, we, we feel like that it's, it's important for our listeners to have basically a synopsis from the president or in the case that he's not able to be there, you know, another representative from the council to essentially give a synopsis of the meeting. So, no, sir, that's part of...
That's a value add. It's a thing you're providing for us with no additional charge beyond the cost of actually hearing the city council meetings.
That's great. It's a factor in the, you know, it's, it's part of the act, yes, sir.
Thank you.
Councilwoman Yarborough.
Thank you. Um, you know, I love you and I love the station and all of the services you give us. So, and I have always, ever since I've been on the council since two thousand eight, Councilwoman Benjamin and President Bowie, I, I know the three of us have always, always supported, um, and all the council people have not. It's not always been a hundred percent participation in paying for the show being on the radio, but I know the three of us always have. But now, given how this thought of quality and with the things that have gone on with us and the way that some of the people who have come up here have acted on the radio just because they felt like they could and the way that the actions up here have depicted the town and everything, I just don't know that I'm just inclined to help support that this go around. And it is nothing, I want you to do well across the, you know, but I, I just would have to really think about that and see how, I know that the president has made some changes to the agenda and has, and has said that he's committed to hold the, I would say, to the fire. And, you know, he's not letting me gamble on much anymore. But I, I think that we're really need to know that there're going to be some, I'm going to really need to know that there're going to be some changes made because I, I'm not going to pay for, I'll be embarrassed like that, like we have been. I just wanted to say that.
Yes, sir.
So if I don't, that's why.
Yes, ma'am. I understand. Thank you.
Do you have a sense of urgency when they get to the council?
Councilman, uh, Ms. Ruby.
I have one more part to make and I'm going to leave this alone.
Yes, sir.
I am one of those council people that did not support the broadcast because I was supporting the lowest bidder. And I, I insisted that the other radio stations be privileged to the business of the city. And I was prepared to chip in with my discretionary with the lowest bidder. Unfortunately, the lowest bidder didn't like it, the job. And Arizona Broadcasting Company did. So I don't contribute to it. It has nothing to do with you and your family personally. I do, I do stand by it. All broadcasters need to be privileged to do a bid with the city. And I believe in the lowest bidder process. You know, trying, you know, what, what you, and there have been other broadcasters, they have broadcast the seven city council bidders and they have made a bid to do the same thing. And they, and they were the lowest bidder. However, they didn't get the job. But it was the decision of this council with their discretionary as to who did this and support it. I have no problem with this. I just want to be clear.
All right. Thank you, Councilwoman Ruby. Just offset that, like I always do when he says the same thing.
The reality of it was, we couldn't get any guarantees, remember correctly, the other radio stations could not guarantee that they wouldn't cut this meeting apart, use things out of the contest to push their agendas. That was my primary concern and was unable to be answered correctly from some of the bidders that occurred here. I obviously agree with you, saving money where we can is a, is a great thing, but if they can't keep things where they need to be and keep it in context, then that's why I voted against them for this radio station because they could not guarantee us they wouldn't cut it apart for their own agenda.
And I was not aware of that.
Yes, sir.
Paul wants to know where that leaves him.
Well, I'd also like to make one more final statement. You know, if, if this ends up being the end, as I said, the end of the road as far as us broadcasting the council meetings, I'd like, still like to let y'all know it's very important to us that we, you know, offer y'all access, you know, even if it's on an individual basis, you know, at our station, you know, please continue to send us, you know, special events you have going on, things you think would be important for your constituents to know. By all means, this would not sever our relationship. You know, I just think, I want to point that out that that's important to us, that y'all know that, that, you know, the council meetings being on WJAM doesn't predicated on anything else we may do together.
I want to finally say thank you for staying out of our affairs. You have not been in our affairs. We've been on your radio station, I have not heard you say one thing this way or that way. Thank you for staying out of our affairs and just letting us do the radio station. And thank you for all those free shows that you give us after every single council meeting the next morning, you give us a free show. You give us free airtime and you ask... When I voted, I voted for a total package, which means I voted for several things. I was looking for several things. You had those things and you had other things as well, including your professional listening and your presentation. So I want to say thank you for that and hopefully it's not the end of the road. If it is the end of the road for this panel, listen to me individually, I'll be down. I may do something for you.
So I guess my final question would be, at this point, what, what do we need to do to be considered?
Well, basically, look, I'll be sending out a cross fund to all the local radio stations like I did last year. Let me apologize. We used to do it at the beginning of October, but things have been disarrayed. So apologize. Put it on me. So I definitely write it up, type it up and get it.
Very good.
Since we don't have a member's ready system, so I would type it up and make sure that it's there, unfortunately.
One, thanks to each and every one of you. I really appreciate the opportunity to come before you tonight.
Hold up. Ms. Paul.
My dear.
Ms. Thomas?
Yes, ma'am.
I want to thank you too because from the time that I have been coming to you, to the radio show, we're doing the broadcast after the council meeting that morning, your, your radio show is, is very pleasant atmosphere and you feel comfortable and a lot of people listen. A lot of people listen. Some people miss the council show and they enjoy it. And I love coming back, you know, because it makes a lot of people happy to see themselves. Thank you.
Thank you for the nice comment.
Well, Paul, it may have, if you have donuts, coffee, wait until they come out.
You know, our biggest problem there is, you know, we do have Todd Prater there and he gets his hands on it before you guys.
He's in over...
Thank you.
Good evening.
Have a good evening, Paul.
Thank y'all too. Thank you.
Todd's a small guy.
He is. Big name, Todd.
All right, Reverend Bowden, stop the violence march.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen.
Good evening, gentlemen.
Council President. I'm here today because usually in the last sixteen years for some of you doing it, I'm Representative Seth Higginson, CEO, Reverend Michael Bowen, and we've been doing this march for the last sixteen and one half years in the city of Selma because we've been having young black men shot down like dogs in the street, die. And we continue to spread this message and send this message to perpetrators of gun violence. And it goes along with Dr. King's celebrated birthday, which is January twenty first, the third Monday in January. Now, the process works very simple. We go to the police station, we get a permit for the march. It's done, actually, in past administration, it was done in less than one hour. We go there, Sergeant Stone was at the time there, he give you the permit, sign the permit, brings the permit over to the mayor's office. The mayor either sign off on it, whatever the process is there, and we get the permit. We pay one twenty-five, one fifty, one up to two hundred dollars. This is the permit right here. This permit is two thousand and fourteen. It just so happened to be one of the permits I put my hands on running out the house. And this permit is a hundred and, a hundred and three dollars plus taxes, I believe it's two hundred and thirty-three dollars and twelve cents. Now, I applied for the permit, went through the process, went to the police station. I was told to see Lieutenant Fritz.
Fritz.
Fritz, yes. It took about a week and a half to actually contact with him because he's always in the field, understanding it's a busy job, being traffic director, whatever work he does. And finally, when I saw him, he said, wait, you get back with me. It took three weeks. Actually, he even talked about it, spoke about the permit at the police station. Finally, I called some other captain, he referred me to other captain, process, it goes into January the seventh. Finally, when I actually got the permit, I said, this is seven hundred and seventy-five dollars? So how in the world can a permit go from, I know it's inflation, you know, you know, we have a problems, from two hundred dollars to seven hundred and seventy-five dollars? I was on my way to Atlanta and I got a call from the mayor's office saying to me, well, the permit is here, it's ready, because I brought it over and handed, tried to see the mayor, of course, couldn't see the mayor, give it to one of his assistants. He said he'll get it to the mayor. I got a call, the permit is ready, it's seven hundred and seventy-five dollars. So I'm here on behalf of Seth Higginson to ask the city of Selma to please help us. We're a nonprofit, five oh one C three, and this is all we do. If we're not at the courthouse trying to get young people stabilized, trying to get them on the right foot at a county jail or the state prison or out in the street, doing the job basically right along with the policeman, if not locking them up, because we, that's not our job. So I'm on behalf of Seth Higginson, once again, I'm here to ask the city of Selma to give us a reduction with these prices. Because we, as it is right now, we cannot afford to pay seven hundred and seventy-five dollars for a permit if I event would take two hours walking from Brown Chapel Church to Dr. King, Dick Mattis sixty-five, coming down Alabama, making a left on Broad Street, right there to the foot of Edmond Plaza Bridge.
Okay. First of all, have you, how much are you asking us to help you with it? And also, Reverend Bowden, let me commend you because you've been doing it for the last several years. But when you're looking at the cost, you also have the fact that it's been a holiday, you know, it's a holiday on the Monday. And then you're looking at a lot of the crossing guards are not working, so there's time and a half for the crossing guards. And we're looking at what, twenty-five dollars an hour for the police officers as well as the crossing guards, ten dollars per hour. So how much are you asking the council if we could help you with this amount? I would just support or help you with this endeavor because I know the importance of it, especially with the violence in our community. I've been on board with you since you started, so I definitely would be willing to help you with it. So I guess, council members, I would encourage you to look in hard to see what you'd like to support. Councilwoman Benjamin and Councilman Short.
Reverend Bowden, may I compare two thousand and fourteen, please? Thank you. You want to share this down there and then I pass it this way? This is, this is this year. Okay. Okay, you got that. I wanted to see that, to see the difference in, because we don't, we don't set the amounts for our officers. They have to, they have to make a certain amount when they're off duty. This is why parade permits and any kind of commits concerning, permits concerning safety goes to the police department because that's their area. I just looked at the difference between the number of crossing guards and the number of police officers that the police department determined would be needed. On that one, it says six crossing guards. This one, this year says fourteen crossing guards. How many police officers does it say? One police officer on that one and three police officers on this one. So I, I wanted to compare that to see, this is a huge difference between this year and that one. And the route is the same, Reverend Bowden?
Exactly, exactly.
Okay. Hold on before you expand because I know you're anxious. The route is the same, right?
Yes, ma'am.
And I would hate to think that we are doing something different to you all in any way, that we would jack this price up from all these years when it was a hundred and something dollars to two hundred dollars. I, I would hate to...
Seven hundred and seventy-five dollars.
To, um, yes, I, I heard you and I see it on this paper. I have the current one in front of me in year two thousand and fourteen. I would hate to think that someone has taken this application and decided to give you such an enormous amount of money for the same route, for the same type of labor and all of those things. So I hope that it's not happening here. It just does not look right to me. This amount of seven hundred and seventy-five dollars does not look right to me. And all of your paperwork, you're saying, this is the comparison. I'm sorry, I meant to pass it down. Councilwoman, tell us, gave you all the current. All of the other years are the same old house. And this particular year, I don't see you, and this is me, and, and this, I'm not an expert, okay? This is my opinion. I don't see maybe fourteen crossing guards. Fourteen. I don't, I don't see that. I, I really don't. The officer that I see you would need would probably be the most traffic when you be here. Because you're going to have proxy guards in that office yard. I have a think that when you get some busy thoroughfare, you would need an officer, which is the one on two thousand and fourteen. And now you have three at twenty-five dollars an hour. And I guess it's holiday, no, that's regular pay. That sounds like regular pay. And so that is why I wanted to compare what you had in your hand to what we have right here. Because I, I think the amount is ridiculous, but it's always my opinion. I'm not focused safe, is my opinion in comparing one fact to the other fact.
And also too, Reverend Bowden, Councilman Short, in the past, when we had the prior administration in the office, they waived a lot and couldn't have been had.
Exactly.
So this is new administration and you have to also take that into consideration. And when you're blocking off the streets, you know, we also blocking off some businesses that may be open, so they could impede customers kind of, but let's see what we can do to help Reverend Bowden with this endeavor. Have you talked with the mayor about...
Anyone?
No, sir. Several attempts. All right. Councilman Short.
I truly don't want to, us to begin to question the integrity of the police department. I, you know, I, I deemed that what they have given is needed. So I would rather for this council to just ante up and this, this be a part of helping to liquidate this fee. Because this is what the public safety, police department have deemed it would be needed for this march to take place. And I know this march is very needed, it is worthy, you know, the crime in our community is at all time high. And anything that we can do from a council perspective to show support for activities such as this stop the violence movement, I would hope and pray that we will be about that relative question of the police department and their estimate, as to what it would have taken to have the necessary security for the people that will be participating in this very worthy march.
Thank you, Councilman Short. Councilwoman Thomas.
President Bowie.
Yes, ma'am.
Right now, we are not able to, at, at this time that our stretch, our destruction area, that we can't get any funds right now to do that. But I am going to, me as a leader who with this violence in my area, in my ward, because I have had murders, just had a recent murder on the street. And I would want to, I have, I will try to come up with some money from some of the of my constituents in my ward to support this here because we need this. We really do need what you're trying to do because no one is coming out in this community taking a leadership to, to stand out about stop the violence going through, during a march. And this is what we really need to let, to get the young peoples involved in whatever it is to do. I will come up with some funding for, for this.
Thank you so much.
Reverend Bowden, then it's at ten o'clock in the morning. I have your problem resolved.
Thank you so much, Mr. President. There's much more to say, but I believe that's about it.
Thank you.
Mr. President, if you would convey to the Public Safety Director, I think that's in terms of fits, that the costs, and I'm sure they're not going to move until they realize that this council has been paid, maybe now that this council is going to help Reverend Bowden with that, that cost so that they can really put the manpower in place coming the twenty-first, which is Monday, so this march can take place.
I give my call at the end of this. And Councilwoman...
Reverend Bowden, I just wanted to thank you and concur with Councilwoman Thomas to let you know that, give me your number, I will x a few of my constituents as well as, well as give a personal donation to ensure that this come to pass.
Thank you so much. And that was the bottom of day five.
That's it. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you so much.
Ten o'clock in the morning. To the mayor's report, we have Colonel Mayor Eric Allen Jr.
This is definitely not the mayor's report, but I appreciate it, Councilman. Bowie putting me on early because Mr. Lewis has got to get back to Birmingham tonight. You all know Jim Lewis, he's been here before. He is almost on the verge of putting this St. James' say together. And I know he's emailed all of you about where he stands, but I thought it'd be best for him to be here personally to talk to you. I don't know if you, I doubt if you need to go into executive session unless you just want to, but because I don't think he's in the public, doesn't need to hear. We're not talking about negotiating the legal contract. So if it's all right, I'll turn it over to Mr. Lewis.
Yes, sir. Mr. Lewis.
Hello, everyone.
Hey, how you doing?
Thank you for taking the time to review my email. It's really a pleasure for me to be back here. Kind of walked me through it. I think it's, as Harry said, I think it's probably, we're at a juncture where there really isn't anything that isn't going to be of me on public record anyway. Since I emailed you, we spoke to Hilton yesterday. Again, they're, they're confirming, we're at a juncture where we're communicating with them about every other day as they're putting their final details on their franchise committee process. We, again, do expect them to go to franchise committee before the end of the month. As soon as they have done that, we will be immediately in touch with, with you and with Harry to confirm that they have in fact approved us. I would say for us who are familiar with that process, I would imagine that you are not, they don't go to committee with things they're not going to approve. So this is not something that I'm concerned about at all. We expect them to go forward with that step. From that step, they will produce the franchise agreement. Because we've worked with them before, we have, if you will, a negotiated template that they will echo. So the franchise agreement should come out roughly a week to ten days after they've had their approval. We will be in a position to execute that. The only other thing that we need from Hilton is what is called a lender comfort letter. And the lender on the project will require that. It basically assures the lender that if we stumble... Uh, it basically assures the lender that if we stumble, they can work, uh, directly with Hilton and ensure that the project will be completed and will be able to operate. Um, do you have any questions about the Hilton side of things before I go on?
Councilwoman Jackson?
Um, is this deal a little closed?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. You already know my other dealings. Okay, thank you.
Okay. Uh, do you want me to keep talking?
Reverend Warren and the Jacksons?
Okay.
Please.
Okay. Um, the, uh, second thing, uh, that I commented on was the, um, the theft thing for all of the mechanical equipment that was, uh, taken off the roof for, uh, above the kitchen for the hotel. Um, I believe that that has been diligently, uh, handled by, uh, Pete here, uh, representing the city. Um, again, a process that we're somewhat familiar with. Uh, it is a pretty big, uh, sum of money. So, um, the adjuster has repeatedly told Pete, um, and, uh, Patrick Mercier, who I work with, that they expect a decision, uh, before the end of the month. Um, my experience with this is they're part of the adjuster's job or part of the insurer's job is to try to resolve the claim as inexpensively as they can. Um, I think, uh, being very specific, there's gonna probably be a debate on what equipment is spec, meaning the manufacturer, uh, that is spec, uh, the carrier equipment that was on the roof is slightly more expensive than, um, other equipment that is available. Um, my opinion, both as, uh, uh, I'll say a caring citizen and also as someone that ultimately is going to be operating the property that will use this equipment, um, you insured carrier equipment, you deserved to have carrier equipment on top. So, long, long story short, I expect them to result, to come back and propose a resolution. I don't expect that to be an immediate, uh, acceptable resolution. Um, we'll, uh, support Pete in however they want to resolve that, but I would assume that that can be resolved in the timeframes that we're talking about with Hilton. But needs, I, I would hope everybody understands that we need to resolve that, um, before we can, uh, close.
Councilwoman Short and Councilwoman Jackson?
Dear man, it's been a long, a long road travel. I want to, uh, encourage you to continue to pursue closing on the St. James because it is needed. I know this is something that you're looking forward to, but I know that there are certain things that has to be done. And we just got to just believe in you, knowing that, uh, soon and very soon, that this deal will close. I think Mr. Pete, uh, indicated to us that there's gonna be ways and means to resolve that problem that took place with those air conditioning units. We're hoping and praying that that will come to fruition. But I just wanna just encourage you to continue to stay the course and go ahead and close on this deal and get the St. James taken right.
I appreciate that. Thank you.
Councilwoman Jackson?
I just wanted to say the same, much of the same. Um, I am so thankful for your diligence and perseverance. Um, I'm so proud that we have a investor that's willing to take the enormous amount of time that you have in our city, in our St. James and making it to a beautiful, um, tourist attraction for our city. And so, I'm just grateful that this will come to fruition really soon. I'm excited about what you're going to do and what, and the transformation is soon to come.
Thank you.
Alright. Anything else?
Uh, the next comment I made, uh, was regarding the lender. Uh, again, we're at a juncture where we're working with the lender or lenders' council going through the closing checklist. Um, really, the lender right now is slightly ahead, right? Um, but the lenders, uh, I think final motion is going to be, uh, resolving, uh, receiving the, the executed franchise agreement and the lender comfort letter. And, uh, I'm forecasting ahead that that, that to me is the last thing that will drop and then we'll close. Um, I think, um, it'd be hard, I'd be hard pressed to find someone, I think, more enthusiastic about this particular project than I am. Um, but I would say the lender may, may fall into that. This is a, uh, a, a, really a pet project for them. They want to, uh, invest in Selma. It's something that, I think they, they believe in the project, they believe in the economics as we've explained it. Uh, clearly, it, it made the world of difference to get Hilton on board, um, but they are big fans. I'm not, I'm not fighting an uphill battle with them at all.
So, we're looking at maybe another two or three months?
No, sir. No, sir. No, I, I, um, and, uh, I think, uh, Harry and I spoke about this, uh, but we expect to be, again, through, for, have formal approval with Hilton before the end of the month. Uh, at that juncture, we're in a documentation phase. We're clearly in a documentation phase with the, um, the lender. Uh, again, the sure, uh, I know you all understand is out of my control, but again, what they're telling Pete, what, uh, they share with our representatives, they expect that, uh, to be, uh, resolved, uh, pretty quickly. And those are, um, uh, I think Harry, uh, is gonna speak to you about, uh, the purchase and sale agreement. Um, I touched on something with email, uh, with SRA, but I think the things that I just touched on here, that, that's where, that's where we're focusing every day.
Okay. Thank you. Any other questions for you, Councilwoman?
No, I'd just like to thank him again for his interest and Reverend Warren's interest in the hotel. And I also thank the law firm that's been there with us to tie our step away.
Yes.
Uh, because that's also a Herculean effort as well. And again, someone needs to win desperately and I, and I, I hope and I do believe that, uh, this will come to fruition and it will be the win that we so desperately need. They're downtown to revitalize. So, I thank you for your efforts so far.
Jim, Jim, assuming that you were able to close by February twenty-eighth and got started. What did you, now, I mean, you can't say exactly. What is your estimate of how long it would take to do all the work?
We, we think we're three to four months out. And it, it's a, it's a fairly rapid process, um, uh, getting into, uh, some minutia detail. Uh, we've got, uh, water intrusion that we need to deal with. So, there's a fair amount of, uh, what I would call gutter, uh, exterior work that, that's gonna be, uh, uh, resolving, uh, some deferred maintenance that's out there. Um, we've got some, uh, Hilton specs that we need to deal with particularly, um, on the, what I call the ten back, uh, central rooms on the, on the riverside of the building. Um, one of the things that we fought for and it took us a while with Hilton, um, but I felt that it was very important to maintain the character of the original building. And, uh, we, we have that. And so, we will hit every component of the surface, but we are not changing configuration in the, uh, the front building. Alright? Um, we, we touched on again because of the, the theft of mechanical equipment. That is the other, uh, really significant line item curing, uh, basically replacing all that equipment. And unfortunately, the way our work, work works because of the, uh, change in refrigerant since those units were put in place, get, uh, A, the loss of the outdoor units actually compels us to replace the indoor and the outdoor unit.
Let me, let me follow up with this, okay?
Any other questions? Thank you very much for the opportunity to come down. And, and I do wanna say this, um, I'm thrilled to be here. This is not, um, this is not tough lifting. This is something that, uh, has, has really become near and dear to my heart and we're gonna finish it off. Appreciate your patience and, and let us do that.
Jim? Jim?
Yeah, well, so basically to, to sum up, the code of insurance claim and looking through the Hilton process and that we're gonna need to extend to, uh, we, we put it here February twenty-eighth and I have a resolution. I know you, that, I hope it'll get on the consent document next Tuesday, that, that extended to February tw- twenty-eighth. But to be, to be careful, uh, we, I've said further that, that you, you as a city, as the city council president, together with the mayor, will have authority to extend it beyond that as long as it's not for more than sixty days. So, because you heard what he said and look, this lender, the, is, the requirements they want are, are, and they, and we, they got Atlanta lawyers, we've got to work through all, all of them and these things can get, can get barged out. He, he's rare to go, he's put a year of his life into it and spent, no, telling how much money, but, so, so what the resolution will say is it's to February twenty-eighth, but that, that the mayor and city council pres- uh, acting jointly, president acting jointly, have further authority to extend and close it. So, we'll have to come back to the council every time if something, if that happens. Then, then, and you've already authorized the mayor and the city council president authorizing jointly, acting jointly to ratify, there's all kind of paperwork. The purchase agreement he mentioned, uh, and, and various other, uh, administrative, administrative, insurance process, allow them to sign the, the transaction documents because that's not something that every, everybody has to be involved in and the two leaders would do that. So, I'm gonna leave this resolution here and, uh, I made several copies. I, I, I'm with you here. But so, if possible, uh, if, uh, what do we need to do?
Well, basically what I need to do is give it to Ms. Harris and go down with the number for the resolution. Uh, so I will get her prepared tomorrow. If it's okay with the council, putting off the agenda, just move forward.
Reverend, I think, I, I think that would be staying, do a bit of passes around so that you can be-
Oh, that's not me. But I could, Ms. Harris, uh, as far as the number. Alright, any other questions for Senator Allen?
Thank you again.
Thank you, Ben.
Thank you.
God bless, Jim.
Thank you.
Now to the business order, um, I'm delighted to have our superintendent in the audience tonight, Dr. Williams and Mrs. Peterson and Ms. Harris. Uh, thank you for indulging us tonight. I'm gonna ask Dr. Williams to be here, please, on that.
Good evening.
Good evening.
To give you, to view a copy of our strategic plan. Um, you may have seen this before or, um, been to some of our meetings where we were discussing the meeting, but I don't believe I've given you each a copy of it. But we are here tonight because we are, of course, interested to see the direction that the council chooses in terms of the, the tax dollars. Um, I'm presenting the strategic plan to you, uh, just as a, a way to, uh, really, um, reiterate the work that we're doing as a school system. Um, you know, when you think about financials, uh, you look at, uh, assets and liabilities, um, and when you're looking at investing, you want to make sure that your investments are worthwhile. Um, I present you this strategic plan to show you that your investment is worthwhile, um, by contributing and continuing to contribute to the Selma City Schools. Uh, we, of course, acknowledge we've got a lot of work to do. Uh, if you've been following in the news, we are making progress. Um, and, and when I say that, I mean in terms of improving academic outcomes for our children. But we're also making changes, uh, because we recognize that, um, there's some instability in terms of financial resources, um, for us, um, as well as the city as a whole. Um, at our board meeting on Tuesday night, our board voted to close two schools. Um, and this move was put forth, uh, because of our need to, um, look at our financial situation and make some much-needed adjustments. Um, so we are doing our part to ensure that we're good stewards of tax dollars. Uh, I just ask that, that we continue, um, the partnership and the support that we receive from the city because it's much needed. Um, and it certainly plays a vital role in our abilities to serve, um, the children of this great community. So, just wanted to, um, leave you all with that, but if you've got any questions or anything that I can share with you, I'm happy to do so.
Well, first off, let me thank you, um, Dr. Williams, along with his staff, for the prepared effort that you put forth and invested in our future leaps of tomorrow and today. Um, I know Selma City Schools have gone through this transition, but, um, in order for us to, um, build, drive and share, you have to rock on through the school system.
Absolutely.
Your students is only as strong as your school system. And, um, I'm advocating that at least that we move forward to, uh, continue giving this amount until fiscal year, and then, please, we can just sit down and, uh, talk and see what we need to do for the day, fiscal year. Because, you know, we also talk about, we love the young, the young children, the young boys and girls, but it's important that, you know, that in our future leaders, I know there was a post on Facebook that, when I voted no, that I had a hidden agenda, um, working at Wallace for the last twenty-five years, I know the impact, a lack of, lack of funding, how much it can have a inver- adverse effect when it's student system. Um, we work closely with Perry County, Dallas County, and also Selma City School System. There are federal programs, uh, that could be drastically affected if these funds are cut. And also as far as with the retention rate, it plays a big part in it. Um, you know, unlike some of the private schools, uh, they may not have the luxury of, you know, getting the benefits, but I'm advocating that at least we move, continue to move forward with this, um, sales tax, fiscal year, which starts in October.
I, I concur with you. When this issue was brought up, several meetings back, very little information was known to this council about how that tax, uh, was, um, brought up. Because I went back and I researched the minutes and, uh, that was back in eighty-two and it was clear to me that this was a permanent, uh, resource that was authorized by the Selma City Council. And at that particular meeting where it was brought up, even though a vote was taken that gave the impression that that, uh, resource was being rescinded, that wasn't the case.
No.
Because there were several things that should have taken place. And, and of course, according to the minutes, you know, that was dated on, uh, November the nineteenth, twenty eighteen, there was more information that we was asking to be brought back to this council. And of course, uh, that never was done. But all along, Mr. President, I, I, I think we put that on the agenda, that this resource will remain with the Selma City School System and just let it, just let it go.
Alright. Any other questions? Comments? Councilwoman Youngblood?
Well, you can put it on the consent agenda, but I'll ask what's been taken off. Is that it?
Okay. Well, we just, yes, in the business, uh, Councilwoman Jackson?
Dr. Williams, I absolutely, uh, love what you're doing.
Well, thank you.
What you've, uh, the leadership you've given to the Selma su- school system. And my vote would not be about the work that you're doing. I concur with that. But just as you had to make hard decisions in closing out schools, one particularly in, in the area in which I represent, those are decisions you had to make based on your budget, based on the items that you knew you were, our debts you were incurring and things that you were experiencing. You had to make a tough choice. And the tough choice here is, we've laid off sixteen employees. The tough choice here is we don't understand exactly the totality of our finances. The tough choice here is if we don't raise taxes, some say, that, uh, we won't have a city, we may be in bankruptcy. Those are tough choices that we have to make. And so, our first, um, priority is to make sure the city is functioning because we're representing, here to represent the city government. And though we love to support, we love to, and if we get in a position where our finances show that we're able to support again, I would support it, but at this time, the things that I'm seeing, the layoffs, the potential layoffs that have been stated, um, through the administration that may be impending in March, more layoffs to come, like whole departments are being slashed, then I, I would hesitate. I would not be able to be in a position to vote to continue to shut down city government and fund the school system at this time because if we close the government, then the school system is going to be impacted because I'm quite sure that some of our parents have students in the school system. And so, we're here to make tough choices. I, because you're a leader and because you're professional, you know it's not personal. You don't take it that way. And we've had discussions about this. And so, um, I would not be in favor of this at this time because of those reasons. If, if I get the books and the finances are in place and we can give you that four hundred thousand and more, let's do that because we want to support our school system and our children. But at this time, with everything impending and so much uncertainty, my vote would have to end.
Also, too, I do concur with you, Councilwoman Jackson, Youngblood, but also what you call protocol. I'm, I mean, we just want to cut the funding, we should have made it prior to the fiscal year because the budget was made based upon this sales tax, John, the red part. Because the budget was made based upon the sales tax on the red part.
Right, we have this budgeted for FY nineteen. And I definitely understand the tough decisions. And you're right, the recommendation to close schools was absolutely a tough decision. But just do be aware that without this funding, we'll be in a similar situation in terms of possible layoffs. Which of course, that wouldn't support the city either. So I mean, maybe it's a no win situation when you look at it that way. But the funding plays a very major role in terms of how we do school.
Mr. President, I would have to call the school back and read the four Selma City Council members of eighty-two. That tax was voted on by this council to be given a portion of that tax to the Selma City School System for the education of our children. I know these are hard times when it comes to finances. But I don't see taking money from our children's education to show up where we're lacking in other areas of doing business for this city. I think if there's going to be any cuts, let's look at some other ways and means and lead the education of our children, attack the resource that was given to them back in eighty-two.
And also too, we have a resource at the end of this month that we also need to reserve at the end of this, in January. Councilwoman Thomas, then Councilwoman.
I hear, I was sitting here listening and I hear each of our councils speaking out about the education for our children. We all know we need the funding for the education for our children. But right now, with the finance situation, we don't even know if the money is there to pay out. We don't know. We honestly, we do not know. I'm not going to sit up here, if I knew the money was here to be paid out, we got workers out here laid off. And I hear each one of us, and when it comes to education for the children, I'm with it. But we pushing and we not seeing, we're not seeing the money. If we see something, we don't see nothing. So right now, I, you know, I'm for the education for the children. But I'm not going to be talking and I know that if we can't get money for other things to bring the workers back, are we going to get the money for to, you know, to push for the education for the children? And it's being truthful, me.
I understand.
You know what I'm saying?
I do, I do.
All right, Councilwoman Youngblood.
Thank you. Dr. Williams, I thought we were going to get to skate by without my having to address this. Because I addressed it before and you know, but did what Councilwoman Jackson said. And I've said it before publicly and we've had conversations about it. But I'm going to address because Councilman, my good friend, Ms. Shaw, who I love and respect, brings this up. And I will say, because I want everyone to know, and I want to remind the councilman, I have read the minutes. I have spoken with council people who were on that council at that time. And I do understand what they claim that the council's intent was and how all that came to be, as well as having read the minutes myself. And I understand that they did mean to help the schools initially temporarily, but we were doing so well at that time. We had a full mall, full of stores that were doing well. We had a strip mall across the street full of stores doing well. We had a, well, a BK and a Piggly Wiggly right there. And you know, we had all the, so things certainly were different. The city of Selma could in its large ass be more generous with everybody. And I hope and pray that we are that way again. I believe that the state of Alabama, in fact, I happen to have personal factual knowledge. This, the state of Alabama is woefully deficient in our local funding of our schools. And I look forward to the day when we can do better. However, as Councilwoman Jackson tonight has pointed out, and some of my other folks have pointed out, and I have said. You know, we do have to think about our sixty-eight families of the laid off workers. While we did have a commitment that was made back in nineteen eighty-two to the Selma City School System. Before that, we had a commitment, Councilman Shaw, my fellow council family, to the citizens of Selma, to have the streets clean, the sewers maintained, the garbage picked up, trash picked up. You know, all of those things. And to the departments that we would have the department staff to maintain, to our workers that we would have, you know, the jobs for them to come to so long as they showed up like they were supposed to, sober and ready to work and doing the work. So we are not fulfilling our obligation to our citizens, our first and basic responses. You know, if you want to try to compare apples to apples, it would be like as if, you know, we sent the, you know, the students abroad, kids to school and didn't teach them to read and write and just stuck them in front of big pieces of computers. I mean, you know, we have to, we have to get our house in order. And it is anything but in order, you know, of course. And I am claiming the day that we can be helpful. Yes, it is a cruel joke to just snatch it out in mid-strain. But boy, we have, we've had everything snatched out, the road snatched out from under us in so many ways. And we don't have a clue which ones are. We could absolutely go in receivership next week, you know, have the state come in and put us in receivership. Or we might find that money's been squirreled away like some people claiming it and have a big stash somewhere, you know, I don't know. And then we don't be happy. But until we know what it is, and I, I mean, I, you get my point. But we all love the schools, you know, I love the schools, I love the children. Look, look up the Leader in Me program, I love that program, I'm going to keep telling everybody in the schools, Google it, Leader in Me. Oh, thank you, I love it, I hope to see it one day. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Next is Mr. Art, Michael Chambers. Just want to bring it to the council attention that the state has moved from fifty-four cents a mile to fifty-eight cents a mile. Some that may be acidic, fifty-eight. Would we like to move forward with the fifty-eight cents or just keep it at fifty-four cents a mile? I know the state has done it. Just FYI.
Oh, Mr. President.
Okay, just FYI, that's all.
Thank you, Mr. President. Considering that we don't even get anything, I think it's sort of a later choice. I can't have mileage to someone. I think everything.
The state go up, we can see the automatic.
So I think it's still force, whatever.
I have read, but I mean, I'm not even turning it in my, so.
I mean, I know, because I brought it up, that's been a trend, whether the state go up.
Yeah, the state unfortunate we get it or not, just, we just know it's there.
Let's just be consistent.
I put it on the consent agenda. Future work session.
Let me ask a question, since we're being consistent. What I don't want to be consistent in is driving to Atlanta and getting fifty-eight cents a mile and using a car. So I want to make sure that we don't need to increase anything. We may not be hitting, but someone is. I mean, there's someone, maybe someone didn't actually have a car and was paying for the gas. And so what I want to do is not incur any additional cost at all. That's my feeling, I want to be consistent.
Also, it's an additional cost, and two cents is two cents over four hundred miles or four hours.
But we also have to keep in mind too, an individual get six hundred dollars a month for gas.
We need to, we need to really discuss that maybe some financial.
That's not real. You need to. You can't have both.
You can't have both because I know.
Three, you can't have three things.
Can't have three.
Card is free mileage.
Because I remember council, one of the council person wanted to bring it up that we pay an individual per mileage. And I say, well, we may be paying more app per mile, that's still just a regular stipend. So we were putting it on the consent agenda and I were worried in a way that if we have a discipline.
All right, future work session, I want to bring it before the council members and say, are you inclined to move the work session to the first and third Monday, other than Monday?
Yes.
Instead of that first and third Thursday?
Yes.
Oh, I, when you said Monday, I thought you were saying you have a work session on Monday and the council meeting on Tuesday.
Yes.
Bam bam.
Right, but it's not what you're saying, definitely second quarter.
First and third for the work session.
No, what I was saying is, I thought it was the days of four. It just deal with the four week, the second four, so don't, you don't say the four?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
The nine or four.
The nine or four. So it's just a big sandwich of love. Spent eight hours just immersed in city council running. It's a good way to make a living.
Let's go here with you.
Doctor, I need more Xanax, doctor, I need more Xanax. Two days in a row.
Also too, council members, I mentioned to you before, we're trying to do away with the business, like everything going through committees. And then, you know, the business, what you report, hear the recommendation that you have, just bring it through your committee, we don't want to move forward.
Mr. President, tomorrow you're going to have committee assignments for some of the unfinished business that's been brought forth, i.e. the attorneys, i.e. some other things that we need to get into committees, we start working on those processes?
Yes.
Thank you, sir.
All right, next, Councilwoman Thomas, next three items.
Okay, the public business, I have ran with, I talked to my committee about this. There, I need you to find out, we need to move forward with our business because the bills, the buildings where people rent or lease, we are losing the funding. Wait, Jane?
Yes, sir. Yes, sir. You said we lose the funding.
You know, the buildings, all of our public buildings, the buildings that they, our constituents rent. You know, people are still having things going on and they having problems. They're having problems trying to get the building to have the event at. And I thought that when the last time that we voted to say that some of us, some of the councils said that if there's someone that wants to have an event at one of these city buildings, that we would volunteer our time. And some people called me about the Smithville building. And I wanted to ask you to find out, because they called down to Terry Davis and they was trying to schedule some events. And it was told to them right now that they haven't got the okay from the Marriott to start taking in people trying to set up for events and the buildings are closed. So would you please? Yes. And this is why, this is why I thought that the city needed money. And if you got leaders, we are leaders. And we agreed to, if someone is having an event, one of, in one of these places where they have people laid off, that we would volunteer our time to stay there with them to, it's open.
Okay, I guess if we volunteer our time, I think we would probably be wise to sign a waiver. Yet we're going to volunteer our time to.
Yeah, but you know, you put it, we had put it on the floor and you did a vote. And do you have that whatsoever? Yeah, we did that already. So what you're saying, we get a form, did, if we volunteer our time?
Well, my concern is, I mean, I guess I think that the city, the league, while it's been part-time elected officials and not really go change.
Sure scared you too, Mr. President.
Yeah, because that's why I think about signing.
But we have.
I think they have a problem.
Well, I look into it.
Well, that's what I'm saying, you know, we talked, for the last meeting, we've been talking about this. And you know, like you said. Keep talking about city needs money, then you keep talking about we need to do this, so I'm just asking you.
Okay, I check with the feet tomorrow. Councilwoman.
We can't run ourselves.
You know, we had a little band with Donna Kim a few weeks ago down at the Evans Building. And Mr. Robert, who used to work for, but he retired, he used to work at the Canute Center. And he worked, he can do contract work if this is okay with the city. He knows exactly what to do because that's what he used to do with public buildings, he would be there. He, that's what he did, you know, we hired him and he is a contractor just in, you know, the person that was doing that hired him as a contractor to come and help. They had a caterer, they had him to do, help set the stuff up and do the setup, just like they used to do. So that would be somebody, you know, I don't know how that would work if it just worked as a contractor. So we may have to check into legality and even that.
And also, personally, will you check and see has the, any check has been paid out for some of the, whether the air conditions and things have been taken out of the Smithville building or anything like that? On the insurance. Yeah, you know, they said they had taken the air conditions out. And you know, we don't need the air condition now because it's cold. But it's still, you know, it was, it was, the insurance, it was covered under insurance, they got private up there now. So, but I would like to find out if they have paid them and what are their plans, are they going to go, what are the plans of them moving on that?
As while we're on the, we got Ms. Jane, we want to talk about public buildings and she's talking about Dallas Academy, isn't that what you're talking about? Listen to me, I'm just talking about, I'm sorry, I've had too much on my feed, Brian. Well, I saw Ms. Candy out there and I was.
They, they on the way, everything is rolling for me.
Yeah, I know, well, could you at some point in the next couple of weeks, maybe find out what we can anticipate to be going on with Dallas Academy building that I am missing surrounding.
The bid has already went out and Mr. Pete gave me, I went by his office, he gave me showing the bid process and every, all the information in there that I've been reading over about the Dallas Academy. Now we're just waiting on for the bid to come done.
Okay.
They were due yesterday. Oh, they would do.
My question is making sure that, you know, what we're planning for this physical plan.
Well, he did tell me that Mr., Jerry Pete did tell me he was going to keep me updated and informed on that.
Good.
He did tell me that, that's why he gave me the stack of papers.
They're supposed to be running in the market every time?
It's already been written. People, people have been, done a lot.
The sixteen, they were doing the sixteen, so they got written.
Anything else, Councilwoman?
That's all on the building. And I would like for you to please, we need to know something because people are trying to get these billing. And if we can, we talk about the city needs money and we turn away money, can you find out if we allowed to do? Next thing on here I have, the traffic, the traffic light. For about two years now, I have a traffic, two traffic lights. Uh, next thing on here I have, the, um, the traffic, the traffic light, for about two years now, I have a traffic, two traffic lights. And I wanna, I wanna know how, do, do public work, do we, do public work order the traffic lights?
Lila, must, must tell her, tell her, Lila, Lila, um, this person that ordered the traffic light.
Reason why?
Still working on it.
Okay, well, the reason why, I, well, he's not doing, it, what he's been doing ain't working. He's been coming out, and, 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 and the next, next three weeks, the light go back out, he's been doing it for the last two years. I have two traffic lights, that one on First Avenue and Church, and the one on, uh, Ella Anderson and Church. We've been dealing with these two traffic lights for the last two years, and I'm, I'm thinking that, well, the way they look, they kinda go out, I'm trying to see, can we replace those two, get some new ones to put up there? If they haven't, because I haven't seen them put up any new ones in God knows when.
I know we have, have much in the, in the budget, my, I can't believe people who traffic, traffic lights, so check with Lila tomorrow.
Because they go out, they go out every week, and, and, and I've seen some bad accidents done happen in that area, on Church and, uh, uh, Ella Anderson and Church and First Avenue.
Do councillor, councillor, councillor woman Thomas?
No, sir.
Do?
I have one more.
Go ahead.
Can you get, uh, find out with, uh, this, uh, the fee, have I, have we, uh, do we approve the fee of the public building going up? Because, uh, uh, this, this lady was trying to, uh, plan, uh, uh, she saw me in Walmart, she said she had called and Miss Edwards told her that, uh, the fee of these buildings that we're renting now, uh, are gone up. So can you, uh, can you find out if the fees are?
I'm gonna test it, we can get a copy of the contract, the fees you did on the number of contracts.
Yeah, you would know if the fees have come up because you would have voted on it.
I know that, that's why I told her we didn't vote on it.
So unless she was referencing, uh, when we, um, increased the fee some time ago, uh, maybe two thousand and sixteen or seventeen, unless she's referencing, may, unless the person was familiar with the old fee. And she was talking about the most recent passing of the fee, uh, there is no increase, because the increase will have to come through you, I, and everybody on this panel. Council sets the fees for pub, public buildings, period, so it can't come from anyone else, so you would, you would know if there's an increase because you would have to vote on it.
That's what I told her.
Unless they're talking about the, the increase that happened maybe two years ago.
Mm-hmm, she's talking recently.
Oh, no.
Okay.
No.
That's all, just, check off that for me, uh.
Alright, councillor woman?
Check.
Check.
Jubilee twenty nineteen, I put before each of you a copy of the final meeting, um, back here last year, um, councillor McBooley, councillor president, councillor, uh, Pro team, Benjamin, my, and myself met with, um, the treasurer, Ms. Wade, um, Officer Thomas, and members of the Jubilee Committee. And we discussed several points and came to a resolution as a committee on several points. We met twice, we're supposed to meet again in September, and it did not occur because of our budget hearing. I contacted the chairman of the Bridge Crossing Jubilee, um, Ms. Phillips, and, uh, spoke with her to ensure that my points of records and my notes from those meetings were, in fact, what she remembered and agreed upon. I sent those, uh, to you all on, yesterday I think, to review, to let me know if I had omitted anything, um, that was, I know there were some small, um, things, but we're looking for a vote, uh, to go ahead and ensure that they have the approval they need to get with the, who at least the park, and to, um, decipher traffic routes and things of that sort. But the points of discussion and the points that we're going to be voting on are, one, access from Broad Street to Lawrence. Um, if you recall, they were willing to move, um, and to the east side of, of Water Avenue, so, um, we're looking at those, they'll be on Water Avenue, starting at Broad Street, right at the bridge, and going all the way down to Lawrence Street. You know, that is the street where spillers and the Evans Building and those things are. Access to the Evans Building and amphitheater will, points of discussion that we, um, had at that time, I'm not sure what that would be, because they weren't closed at that time. Um, but, um, I recall them asking for educational, uh, items at that time to do things in those buildings. I did speak with, um, her and reminded her that no food trucks and no vendors, if allowed, um, in the park, um, that is amphitheater would be allowed, um, in that area or the surrounding sidewalk. Also, they would have gates at Washington, Franklin, Green Street, and Lawrence, uh, therefore no, no traffic could be in that area. Um, they're asking that, and I've started and left, and don't, I send it to Mr. President or, um, councillor Johnson, seeing as though it's, it's his area, letters to businesses in the area, making them aware of the, uh, traffic, uh, the additional traffic that may be in the area during that time. And also get them with the cell phone times, trying to ask them to do a story, uh, to let them know that this would be the main area of the Jubilee. Um, they did speak or try to talk about what happens if the Jubilee, and I told them, let's get through twenty nineteen, and, um, if the Jubilee is in place and the St. James is sold, I asked that we allow, get through, um, twenty nineteen, because it is not sold as of yet, it was immediately after sold, then we'll speak with all parties necessary and begin working on twenty twenty. But if, um, these are things, things that they would like to vote on. Also, um, I've confirmed with councillor president, uh, councillor president, councillor Pro team, that they paid a fee of five thousand dollars, um, last year for access, um, or for additional, um, officers and crossing guards and things of that sort. And what, one of the things that we said, um, in our meeting was, they may not need as many crossing guards, uh, to ensure someone's safety from one end of Water Avenue to the other, crossing o, off the bridge and making sure that, um, no child ran out in front of moving traffic. It's not, um, a, um, something that the city would have to look at necessarily, because we would not be, they would not be allowed to cross back and forth, other than as pedestrians do all the time at their own risk, um, and by the, by the signs. So, um, they've also asked to look for public works to, for slow traffic signs, I've, um, will try to speak with them, and I want to bring this before you all, and see what the will of the council was concerning this, and how would you all like to proceed?
Was councillor Johnson in this meeting?
He was not at, um, the first meeting, he said that he would, I made him aware of the second meeting, because he wanted to be there, he was not available for Saturday, and the third meeting did not occur. I did email him with this on yesterday, and then I found out today, um, the tragic news, and so I'm quite sure he has not had an opportunity to review this.
Who was in this meeting?
I named them initially, the, um, president, the protein, myself, um, Ms., let me look at my notes, Ms. Renita Wade, um, Sabina Phillips, Sam Walker.
You said, what, what Wade was that?
Renita.
Renita? Okay, who else?
Um, hold on, let me, let me pull it up specifically for you, um, off the top of my head, I remember Sergeant Thomas being there, um, Sam Walker being there.
So, what, what time was that?
Excuse me?
What time was that? Come on.
Killer Thomas, Sergeant Killer Thomas.
Getting back on the floor?
We, we met three times, twice.
You haven't, you haven't met without an issue?
No.
What, when the last time you met?
May. These were the things and points of discussion.
I think, I think before we vote on this, I think there needs to be a meeting between the Jubilee Committee, so that they can be made aware of what has been talked about in preparation of Jubilee.
What Jubilee Committee? The same Jubilee Committee that I just stated that met twice?
I thought we met with the Jubilee folks.
We did, they were present.
When?
Miss To, To Rain, and they've already agreed on this.
When?
Let me give you that.
I don't think you were finished giving him the names.
Finish, finish the name. Let me, let me get all of my, you know, I could.
You can call him, I'll let you know if he missed somebody, call him, who you remember, I'll let you know.
So that was May twenty eighteen, May seventeen, twenty eighteen, then we met, I think around July twelfth, twenty fifth, and we're supposed to be again in September, uh, when we bring the votes back. Present, Roll Call, councillor woman Maya Jackson, present Sam Walker, Casey Bailey, Renita Wade, Sabina Phillips, councillor woman Angela Benjamin, Fay Rose, Fay Rose, Sergeant Killer Thomas, and councillor president Ford Booth.
Okay, I would.
Got Sam Walker.
Yeah, I would hope and pray before we vote on this, that there be another meeting, because it appears that some of these people that was at the last meeting don't know or function with the city. I think it would be a wise thing for us to do to bring, to meet with the Jubilee Committee, so that we can be on the same understanding, that would be my recommendation. I don't think that it's just for the business, president, I think, I think there needs to be a meeting once again, with Jubilee officials outlining what the expectation gonna be for this upcoming Jubilee.
Okay, as I, if, if I'm allowed to finish, on January the eleventh, I met with the chair of the Bridge Crossing Jubilee, Ms. Sabina Phillips, and I said, what is your understanding of, what have you all voted? If you recall, they said that they were gonna go back and vote as a committee on the things that they agreed upon, and these are the things that they've agreed upon, this is their understanding, and I asked her to be present for Tuesday meeting, seeing as though she's the chair of the committee and she should speak for the committee. I don't see where it's necessary to have another full meeting, everyone was invited, um, to the last meetings that were held, and I think it's imperative that we get this done on the twenty second of January, seeing as though February is coming, and all they have is the first week of March. If you recall, um, Mr. Reverend Bowen stated just tonight that it took him three weeks to get in touch with anyone to get things set at the police department, so if they have the same, we won't have this information in place for them, and it, and our vote is imperative for them moving forward.
I, I understand that, but because of the problems it has, we have experienced with the Jubilee over the last several years, the fact that last time y'all met was May, May of last year.
No, actually, the last time we met was July of last year.
Well, same thing, same thing.
And the, the final meeting was January the eleventh of this year with their chair.
Just the chair?
Yes. But she has the meeting minutes from them, saying what they agreed upon and what, based on our meetings, what they were willing to accept, ultimately is our decision.
That is true, but we do want to be, uh, partners in this very worthy event that takes place every year, that almost the foot soldiers and people who struggle to ensure that people of color have the right to vote. But, sir president, I think it would be wise for a meeting to take place, not only with the chair of the Jubilee, but with the entire committee, so that there could be problems that would be ironed out, worked out, there would be no problem leading up to the celebration of March the seventh, that, that's just my recommendation.
Okay, um, according to Roll Call, I was there, um, we had staff a lot, and I, I, I mean a lot, it was a very cordial meeting, um, everybody understood the move, everybody was in agreement with the move, uh, I don't really remember any adversity to it. Um, I don't know if, what information would change, because, uh, a couple of people are no longer with the, well, I don't know if they would sit here still or not, but, um, I don't know what information would change. And the chair came and represented this year for the committee, I know, I know Ms. Phillips, uh, she's by the letter, um, I don't, I don't know what would change, because someone is, uh, on.
But we agree, we're supposed to have it. Curious, but, all the thing I'm suggesting, for sure do what you wanna do, all the thing I'm suggesting to have any difficulty that will be presented leading up to the culmination of the Jubilee, the fact that y'all met last May, I think it would be wise, July, same thing, what, a couple of months off? It would be wise to meet with the entire Jubilee Committee, along with the city officials, to iron out this, and it may be the same, what is wrong with having a current meeting?
What I'm saying is that we did iron out, the iron was there, we're ironing, we ironed out at those meetings, so we met in May and July, and y'all know the bottom dropped out of the city itself in September, it was supposedly in September, but the bottom dropped out. There was a lot of ironing out at this table down, I mean, a lot of ironing out, uh, at the table, I don't.
Councillor woman Pro team, would you like for me to go through the, uh, actual meeting? Let me, let me do that, uh, let me read off to you the things that were discussed, the things that were recommended, and the things that were agreed upon.
Right.
Okay, so Fay Rose presented the following, volunteers, um, if most of, that they, they are volunteers, there's no payment, and that most of them are free. That, um, Montgomery raised revenue and collaborated on the, she also shared that she was on pass events, she presented, um, there was the presentation, budget minus city income, and there was draft budget that did not include lodging expenses. Councillor woman Jackson indicated that the lodging does not reflect, and asked Ms. Wade to request an audit for adversity. Jubilee recommendations, do not take the five thousand dollar donation that we, we give them. Their recommendation was to become a partner, their recommendation was not to increase the hundred dollar vendor fee this year, and the recommendation was a location change, their recommendation was a location change. The agreed upon recommendations, that, that was, the entire committee agreed on this, and these are the things that they stated in their meeting, we've agreed, however, we have to take it back to our board. One, location change to Broad and Lawrence, amphitheater at no cost, Evans Building partnered under the education committee, paying online, there being late fees, and that the city would do a welcome reception. That's the things that we agreed on, now the city's not in a position where we can handle a welcome reception for any event at this point. So, the points of, that we've agreed on was access to Broad and Lawrence, same thing we initially agreed on. Access to the Evans Building and amphitheater, same things we initially agreed on, no food trucks or vendors in the park and surrounding sidewalks, same thing, and letters to the business, um, underlining the move. They, they have also said they are willing to pay their five thousand dollar fee, which, what they're essentially doing is giving us back the money we gave them. I don't understand, and they are going to be here Tuesday night, we can question them as much as late, as you like, but I will say this, I've taken the time to meet, I've been at every meeting, I've taken the time to ensure that I had a meeting without you all, to discuss the finer points, to make sure that when I presented as the head of the Jubilee Committee, that I did not provide you any erroneous information. If there is to be such another meeting, it will not be based on my schedule, I will not, not take out of my timeframe, because I've done my due diligence, and if Mr. LaShure, councillor LaShure, with all respect, you would like to take over that committee, by all means, do so.
Hello, hello, can we just go ahead and do a MOU based on this whole party sign and move forward with this?
I'll take it out tomorrow.
Could I, could I?
Thank you.
You know, I don't want to take over this committee, I just want to handle any problems, uh, per se that may occur, uh, even in your current stance, you list Meyer needs to look for fee approval and payment pay.
And I stated to you that it was confirmed by councillor woman Pro team, that the five thousand dollars were, was done, did I not ask you to confirm that now? Fay, me, and those are those to myself on this discussion.
Go ahead, go ahead. I am, do, I just encourage that they did, some, they have been a closer meeting to Jubilee since the last time we met was back in?
July.
July, so if they don't think that there needs to be a meeting, I got no problem. But say one thing. But if there are problems occur, don't say you have. Okay, also too, to help, you know, probably, this, for that, this councillor LaShure, if you just get a MOU between both parties, we sign off, then we can go from there, that's all I have.
If you recall, councillor president, we met the day before the last meeting, and there occurred problems, um, we had a MOU, we had statements made, I walked in my high heels from here to Water Avenue and all the way back, um, and so we can't head off every issue. We're the ultimate, ultimately, we're the body that's going to decide, these are the things the committee has agreed on, thank you. Thank you.
Councilwoman?
Just on this part, I'm being surprised. Councilwoman, would you add, um, a number eight? You know, we've talked about, uh, the Phoenix Park for storytelling for the children. You, you do like I do, you write yourself notes. You have to include your notes out here. So, um, that's what I do. And I remember that my assignment was, um, Angela needs to, uh, make sure that she's available, uh, to help with the storytelling tent. And I think I agree to that. If my schedule was available, and I think it is, uh, and that includes the Phoenix Park, just so I'll be surprised.
They, um, actually, we told them every part. So we talked about, Ms. Phillips and I, we talked about the Phoenix Parks and the Butterfly Park.
From Broad to Lawrence.
Right.
Okay.
And what we said to them, from Broad to Lawrence, that was their area that weekend. And that we didn't necessarily take down and say, this person is going to have this thing. But that's, we're not going to allow anyone else to have that area doing that weekend.
I guess.
But I, but yes, you did commit, if you're, if.
Yeah.
So can we just, uh, have that on?
I'll, I'll speak with Ms. Phillips. In the morning, she came by my office last Friday. I asked her to, to come by and then if her schedule permits it. She does not, um, we'll speak on the phone. I type up something, and she's, she'll, she'll be here.
Can we go for the shine, I think we just put it on the shed?
Yes. And I'll send it back to you all again. See, I would've said it to all the Council before today, but I was waiting to hear back from you all. Going to the bottom of my emails to see.
I, I totally missed it.
Totally missed it. So, uh, financial accountability, let's get on, so we can get out of here in decent time tonight. What, what?
I'm just hoping we don't have a problem being up to you.
They, they might arrive. They might arrive. You always, this, this will tackle a lot of them.
Okay, Councilwoman Thomas?
Yeah, I wanted to ask you, you remember the other event, did they ever say they was coming back? Never?
Uh, we're extending the invitation, uh, to the Dallas Center also.
Oh.
Hopefully, if they're planning, they can start back in twenty twenty.
Twenty twenty?
Twenty twenty, hopefully. I'm just praying, that's just a prayer.
But we offered them the same thing they to offer to Jubilee.
Yeah, because I know I was the first one to extend all the branch to Mr. Anderson. After I signed out that, um, things didn't materialize. So, uh, hopefully, we can still extend the courtesy. Hopefully, he'll be back in twenty twenty. Councilwoman?
Financial accountability, um, so I sent you all an email and requesting those documentations. And I, I spoke with our President Pro team, and she's saying fill out, fill out home. I, I know that in a legally convened body, that we're, we're not an individual citizen, we're a body, and so we don't have to do that. But in the, uh, spirit of grace and partnership, I'll do that.
Do the phone.
However, I'll do the phone, I do twelve hundred phone.
Wait, 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 wait. If it's part of the minutes?
It's part of the minutes.
That I signed off on?
Yes, sir.
And the mail signed off on?
Yes, sir.
So it's confirming that the minutes are accurate. So now we still have to use the phone?
Well, I hadn't gotten, I hadn't gotten a response to my email. I sent off, copied all of you all on it. But I, what I, what I want to address tonight, and, um, I did, um, get a name, um, Mr. Matt Oaks.
Yeah. Matt, Matt, Matt Oaks.
Mm-hmm. Who used to be, uh, the auditor for the City of Selma.
For the City of Selma.
Uh, is leading the group that, uh, wants to assist us in understanding the, the data and the finances. Uh, and so, um, if, if it's, is the count, will of the Council, I would like to do a vote. Does it need a vote? No. But why would I like to do a vote? Because I want to show that we are on one accord when it comes to our finances, that we, that our desire is to get an understanding and to move forward. And so that, that's my desire. If it's not the will of the Council, it, it won't make a difference. Uh, financial accountability, I want information from you to seek out three, um, consultant firms, um, to determine if we could get some, uh, printed policy and procedural manuals, um, see the cost for our finances, because we're part-time. We have jobs. We don't have a Treasurer. And so we don't, and we not, don't have access, um, to the, to the financial office. So we don't understand, know their practices. So we can't help them develop their policies and procedures as we could if we had our Treasurer in place and we were talking back and forth and, and being able to assist in developing those as we say we would. Um, and I know that there are some out there, but there needs to be someone that is able to communicate with our Finance Department and help develop those. Um, if you were, if you had an opportunity to, uh, hear the, um, State of the City address or be present there, um, then those, that was one of the things that Mary said that we've been daring and doing, um, probably because we haven't had a court person. Uh, but if you would give me permission, I would, and, you know, I don't like spending money. But I would use all of my, um, discretion there to ensure this is done. But we need someone that's going to be able to talk with our Finance Department, to understand what practices they have in place, how they're doing it, how it can be done better, that understands the policies and procedures and could help them develop. Because we can give them a book if they never read it, or if they're never applying any of the things in the book. It's just a book.
I guess we can add it, 'cause I had someone already looking at Montgomery and Huntsville.
Okay, I'll let you handle it. We can take that off.
All right.
What, what do we take?
By financial accountability.
Oh, okay.
Under that, I wanted to, um, get the consultants for the.
'Cause I sent that budget, that, uh, that audit that we had, uh, sent it to some friends of mine in Montgomery and Huntsville, who basically, uh, go out and audit the missing items.
Okay. So if we could, if we could get that, I will, if, I will partner with you and give all of my discretion there for us and to get that done because we really need to make sure we have those internal controls. Because we're, they haven't started the next budget, um, excuse me, audit, that's whatever, the last information that I was able to obtain, that the audit hasn't started. But if we're doing the same thing that we were doing previously, then we're gonna have not only sixty-one finals, we're gonna have more because we don't have that court person in there saying, this is not right, you, you need to do this. We don't have an actual head, I don't think.
Well, good thing about them, they're Catholic, uh, I pray to the Pope, so this firm in Montgomery and Huntsville, they're fellow Catholics, so they know their pro bond on fire.
Bless the Lord.
The Pope has.
The Pope has given you blessings.
Never mind.
Bless God. Praise the Lord.
Councilwoman LaShore?
That act.
Praise the Lord.
So if you're gonna do that MOU, we can just put it on the center, gentlemen. Everybody's happy, sign off on it. All right. Please, the turn.
Thank you. Oh, I'm sorry, guys, wait. I brought these for Councilwoman Brenda.
In the name of Sarah.
For his birthday.
I'll be, I'll be Sam tonight.